I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for December 12th, 2023. Roll call, please, Mr. Veeder.
All?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
Laylin?
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or amended?
So moved. Second?
All in favor say aye.
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 Oh, same sign, agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone in the room today that would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to our presentation today. The countywide compensation and classification study by Alan Johnning, Senior Consultant of Gallagher Human Services and Compensation Consulting, and Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director.
All right, good morning, Board. Amanda Fesenmeyer, Human Resources Director, here to introduce Alan Johnning. He is our project manager for the countywide classification and compensation study. So I'm going to let him get the presentation up here. Make sure that everyone can see it, all right? And then you should have presentation slide decks. They were sent ahead of time via email, as well as presented there to you, hard copies for the board here. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Alan. We're going to go through the presentation. Anytime board members have a question, want to clarify something, have a comment, feedback, feel free to kind of interject and make that statement as needed. Otherwise, we're going to kind of run through the intro pretty quickly and just get right to the meat and potatoes of the compensation study. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alan.
Excellent. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Board, for having me. Like they said, my name's Alan Johnning. I'm with Gallagher Consulting. We've been working with Amanda and the team here at Blackhawk County for the better part of the last year. Counterpart of mine and myself were here at the beginning of 2023 to kind of kick this off, do some orientation sessions with various groups around the county. And since then, we've been gathering a bunch of external information, reviewing a lot of the information that employees of the county and leaders provided us through the position description questionnaires and that kind of stuff, and have kind of compiled all that together. And then really today is to kind of give a wrap-up of where we are and briefly touch on some next steps. So again, we'll run through this agenda very quickly, fairly quickly on the front end, then kind of talk about some of our initial findings, recommendations, and next steps, and then certainly answer any questions that anybody may have. So just briefly about us here at Gallagher, just to kind of give you a reminder, Gallagher Consulting is a very, very large multinational organization. We've got 40,000 employees spread across the entire globe. But myself and my team that I'm part of are a team of about 40 or so employees that are solely focused on public sector and higher education. So while we have multiple teams and stuff within Gallagher that do comp consulting across all industries and all areas, our team is solely focused on the public sector and higher education piece here. So just kind of to give you guys an idea, that's kind of where our expertise is. Brief project overview, I mean, we tried to split it up into really four different swim lanes here. That project initiation administration phase is really what we spent a bulk of the first couple of months on, really understanding what the current state and what the lay of the land was at the county. Anytime we do these studies, we fully understand that no county, no two counties, no two cities, municipalities, areas like that are exactly the same. So we really want to understand what are the nuances and kind of the intricacies of each of the organizations we're working with, so that we have a good understanding of what the current state is. The classification component there really was focusing on what are the job titles, the job families and things like that that exist within the county? Where do we see some redundancies, kind of crossovers between roles or between areas? And really working with Amanda and the team to kind of identify what some of those areas are and what we may be able to do to clean up some of the titles and things like that. Once we had a good understanding of titles and things, we really moved into the compensation study piece. That's really where we were focusing on what does the county currently pay for certain roles versus what does the external market pay? Again, that's kind of the meat of what the goal of this study was, to understand how competitive the county's compensation structure is. So in doing that, we identified benchmark jobs that we attempted to go out and get information on. We then looked at the internal average salaries of those positions for the county, compared them to the external market, and then really jumped into that bottom box there of completing that competitive analysis for those positions. Right now, forward over the next month or so, we're going to continue to work with Amanda and the team to kind of finalize the project, put forward formal recommendations, kind of put together a report, and hopefully leave Amanda and the HR team here at the county with a clear roadmap on how to move forward, how to possibly implement any of the changes that are going to be adopted. This slide here is really just to kind of talk about, we're following best practice approaches whenever we do these types of studies. We're not reinventing the wheel here. These are kind of the approach that any consulting firm might take in doing these kind of studies. So really just kind of understanding, these are the guiding principles that we used whenever we went to market to try to find external market data, and then when we compared that data internally to the county's positions. Touched on a little bit, selecting of benchmark jobs. When I say we selected benchmark jobs, what that means is anytime we do these studies, it's never our goal, nor is it ever going to be possible, to get market data on every single position or every single job that exists within Blackhawk County or any organization we work with. That's just because no two organizations are exactly the same, no two jobs are exactly the same. What we want to be sure of is that we're checking a box next to each one of these. We want to make sure that the list of benchmark jobs that we're attempting to get data on is reflective of the employee population. We're selecting jobs from the most entry level all the way to the most senior level of positions that were covered in the study. We also wanted to make sure that we were selecting jobs that were representative of the organization horizontally, so, and all the different areas, all the different job families and things like that. And then obviously, highly populated jobs, jobs that are found in most organizations, and then some jobs that may be hard to fill or high turnover positions. So we worked with Amanda and the team to kind of make sure that we checked the box next to each one of these. We felt really good about the jobs that we selected and the information we were able to find. In terms of the benchmark job selection, we selected 85 benchmark jobs as part of this study. So this was the attempt to go out and find market information on these jobs. When we talk about what those 85 jobs represents, represents almost 70% of all the employees within the county and 60% of all the jobs within the county. Of those 85 jobs, we were actually able to find market information on 82 of them. So we felt really, really good about the jobs that we selected, and we felt really good about the data that we were able to find from the various data sources that we attempted to get data from, which we'll touch on here coming up. In reviewing that data, what we really focused on was the job descriptions that were provided from the county. We also looked at the PDQs that were provided from the employees and the supervisors of the county, to make sure that when we were matching jobs, we felt good that we had a good understanding of what the current state jobs were. And then when we went to the external market, we felt like we were making a very good apples-to-apples comparison. Once we found the data and kind of identified the data, we had to adjust it to make sure that we were aging it forward and geographically adjusting it to make it most of an apples-to-apples comparison as possible. When we talk about data aging, what that really means is anytime we're pulling data from any survey source, it's going to be as of an effective date. And that effective date is not going to ever line up perfectly with the effective date of the implementation. So we want to make sure that we're aging the data forward to make it as relevant in real time as possible. We also, when we get data, we have to go more regional or national sometimes. So we understand that anytime we have to go outside of the state of Iowa, outside of the Midwest, cost of labor could be significantly different than it is here in Waterloo, Iowa. So we have a tool that we use regularly from the Economic Research Institute. It's a widely-used tool across the industry that allows us to put in what the source of the data was, what the area of implementation is going to be, and then adjust any data that we're getting to reflect the cost of labor within Waterloo, Iowa. So in terms of selecting the labor market, these were some of the best practice approaches. Again, we had to keep in mind whenever we did this. In terms of the data sources that we use, we actually administered a custom survey on behalf of the county, in which we actually sent a survey out to some pre-selected organizations and entities, which we'll touch on at the next slide. In addition to that, we also use some published survey data sources. What those published survey data sources are, those are third-party organizations that conduct salary surveys on a regular basis, year in and year out. So they're reaching out to all industries, all employers, all things, basically getting a very, very wide swath, hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of data points from here. We're able to cut that by industry, we're able to cut it by geography, we're able to cut it by private, public, for-profit, not-for-profit, to really get a bunch of those, again, as many data points as possible that we're able to get. On the custom survey side, we actually sent out the survey to about 38 organizations, and we heard back from a good number of them. All of them that you see on the slide here that are highlighted in yellow are organizations that responded to all or part of the survey. And what's super important to point out here is, I mean, typically when we do these custom surveys, if we get a 30% response rate on these, in the consulting industry, that's a good response rate on custom surveys. You guys can see here that we got well over 30% on this. And why that's super important is anytime we're gathering data from custom surveys particularly, we have to have at least five data points in order to draw sound conclusions and recommendations. And that's not a number that Gallagher made up, it's not a number that the consulting industry made up, that's actually a number that we get from the Federal Trade Commission and the Department of Labor, that they state you have to have at least five data points in order to draw sound conclusions, in order to make recommendations. So the amount of responses that we got from the custom survey allowed us to really make sure we had really, really good data points, and then supplemented that with the pieces of data we were able to get from the various survey sources on the right side of the screen here, which were comp data, Mercer, Willis Towers Watson, and Economic Research Institute. Again, those are those third-party organizations in which we purchase data from on a yearly basis, that they basically conduct what we did on a very micro scale here for the county. They do it nationally for all industries, all jobs, and things like that. And the goal of those types of surveys is really to kind of help us round out the information that we're getting, and really kind of tapping into more of those not-public companies. You'll see on those custom surveys, we really did reach out to other cities, counties, municipalities, really those organizations that are in the public sector. Because anytime we, with any of those organizations, at the end of the day, if we wanted to get their data, we could put in a Freedom of Information Request Act and get that information. So we find that when we send public surveys to public entities, we're more apt to get a response. When we send those surveys to private organizations, they just, they don't respond, they will not respond. So our goal is, in using some of those published survey sources, to kind of help supplement that, because they do respond to those very aggregated, high-level survey sources that are reached out to.
Alan, is there some type of an exchange when the people or the different organizations do participate?
Yes. So as part of the organization participation in that, whenever we wrap this up, part of our deliverable to you guys is going to be the final report, part of our deliverable for anybody that did participate in this will be an aggregated report of the figures as well. And that's, again, one of the things that we find when we reach out is it, I know Amanda kind of talked, she responds to these surveys that people like this send out. So it's very much a give-and-take, and it's one of the good things about working in the public sector, is we really are able to get kind of that peer-to-peer comparison. So in terms of when we get the data, so we identified who the organizations are, we identified the cuts of data we were going to be able to get, and then what are we going to do with the data? So when we get the information, we really look at the data a couple different ways. We look at it looking at actual base salaries as well as salary ranges. So again, we look at what are the 25th, 50th, and 75th percentile of the reported actual salaries, and then what are the minimums, midpoints, and maximums of those as well. We really want to be sure we're looking at both of these, because it could be very, very justifiable for an employee to be paid at the low end of the range, and then that's totally fine. But then we at least want to make sure that the job that they're in, the minimums, midpoints, maximums, the ranges in which they're assigned are still competitive on that piece. So we're looking at that based on what are the average salaries of the incumbents within Blackhawk County, and then we're comparing those to those two different areas there. On that right side for the pay target, when we say we anchor it at the 50th percentile or the median salary rate, that is absolutely a best practice approach anytime we do these types of studies, is we really want to understand what is that market median rate, kind of what is that middle-of-the-ground rate that the market is paying, and how do the salaries of Blackhawk County or any organization that we work with compare to that market median? Obviously, some positions are going to be above it, some positions are going to be below it, and that could be absolutely justifiable based on the employees that are in the role, how long they've been doing it, what their performance looked like, and things like that. That's unfortunately one thing we don't know whenever we go to custom survey sources, whenever we go to published survey sources. We don't know what those people are reporting to us, we simply know what their average salaries are of their incumbents. But what we don't know is what are their incumbents' tenure versus your tenure? What are their incumbents' performance versus your performance? So again, that's why we have to have these acceptable variance to market data that we have here in this table. And again, that's to kind of understand, it could be totally acceptable for certain employees in certain roles to be lagging the market. They may have a majority of their incumbents that are new to the industry, new to their role, still learning it, so they're not kind of at that fully proficient market rate yet. So again, that's why when we talk about it, if we're plus or minus 5%, we consider that to be very competitive with the market, plus or minus 10%, still certainly competitive. Getting up there to 15%, possible misalignment with the market, but not necessarily. Again, you have to kind of take into consideration what the internal pieces that you know personally about your organization are. But really where the red flags start to get thrown are those jobs that may be greater than 15% against the market. That's really where we would work with Amanda and her team, to understand who are these incumbents, does this make sense, does this not make sense, and really try to remedy those situations. As we talk about what the data showed us off the bat, right here, again, we looked at those benchmark job matches, we wanted to make sure we were getting an 80% job match. We determined average salaries for incumbents at the county, and it compared that to the 25th, 50th, and 70th percentile of the surveys that we had. And then these are the aggregated figures that we found. So this is taking into account all of the positions that were covered under the benchmark job list that we had job data on, taking into account what the average looked like, the aggregate averages. The county, when looking at actual salaries, is right now, looks to be right around 12% behind the median of the market. Likewise, on the midpoints, those are right around 12% lagging the market. Again, this does not necessarily signify misalignment with the market. There were a lot of positions that were at or above the 50th percentile, and there were some positions that were below the 50th percentile, looking at that. So again, that's where we really tried to understand what that looks like. But as it stands currently, this is what the current state looks like in terms of overall averages for the county when compared to the external market. In terms of next steps and kind of what we did once we had this data, what we did is we really understood the current salary structures of all the various structures that exist within the county. We fully understand that there are multiple salary structures, both within bargaining and non-bargaining unit. But in order to really understand how all of the positions within the county stacked up with one another, we really assigned all positions to the non-bargaining salary scale, just to really get that internal hierarchy of positions. So we understood internally for hierarchy, job worth, all that, as well as externally what the data's telling us. What do all the positions at the county look like from the most entry level all the way up to the most senior level? We fully understand that any final placement in any of these structures is going to be dependent upon bargaining unit positions and things like that, as far as ongoing union negotiations and those kind of things. But in order for us to kind of get the most well-rounded picture as possible, looking at all jobs within the county the same, we really placed them all on that non-bargaining structure at first, to kind of see what we needed to do, and kind of see which position stuck out to us.
Is that typical, or is it just depending on, I guess?
It's dependent on any organization. I mean, some organizations may only have one salary structure, period. Some may have multiple. And again, just given the amount that the county has, I mean, I think there's what Amanda's, five or six, seven?
Seven.
Seven of them. Just because some are here, some are here, in order to kind of get that apples-to-apples kind of flatline, we thought the best approach was just to really put them on one scale to determine that.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
So in terms of how we assign jobs within the current structure or the updated structure using market data, so what we really did is how we place jobs in that one salary structure was using both the market data that we got, as well as the internal hierarchy of positions. Again, anytime we do these compensation studies, we very much talk about them in terms of an art and science. The science piece is what is the market data telling us? What are the numbers telling us that we're getting from those various survey sources? When we talk about the art piece, that's really understanding, again, going back, I know I've said it a couple of times, no two organizations are exactly the same. So there could be very, very good reasons why the county may be paying a position well above the market. There could also be a reason why the county may be paying a position well below the market. Some positions may be very, very hard to fill, very, very nuanced. You understand that the market pays X, but you just know in order to get an individual into that job, you've got to pay them Y. Or if you're in an area where you know there's a plentiful amount of employees and things like that, I mean, and you want to pay them a fair market rate, there could be some positions that don't require to go well above and beyond that. So that's really understanding when we talk about the internal hierarchy of positions. Why are positions graded and placed in the structure where they are today, and kind of marrying that with what the external market's telling us? So kind of once we placed all of the positions into that one scale, we're then getting to the point to where what kind of impact is this going to have for us? And the table here really talks about the three most common ways that we talk about implementing any of these changes. The table really talks about the benefits and the potential drawbacks to each of these three options. And these are three options that we're continuing to work with Amanda and the team on to evaluate and determine which one's going to be the most feasible. The first one here is simply bringing to minimum. And what that means is because every job is assigned to the salary structure, every position has a grade or a range that has a minimum midpoint and maximum. Some jobs moved grades as a result of this. So one of the first approaches we took is what would it take at minimum to make sure that everybody in their new role or in their new grade is paid at least at the minimum of the range that they're now in? That's obviously going to be the most cost-effective, it's going to be the lowest cost. But some of the drawbacks for it is it doesn't really factor how long an employee may have been in the role, it could start to create some compression there at the bottom. So that's really just kind of making sure, and again, it's not unique for organizations to do that. Anytime we do these types of studies, organizations didn't get to where they are today, and this is not unique for Blackhawk County, didn't get where you are today with your comp structure, it may not be an overnight fix. So some organizations may do this, bring to minimum as step one, and then kind of phase in the other approaches over time. The second implementation option is basically bring to position and range up to the midpoint, depending on what their current position is. And we talk about bring to position and range, that's really looking at all employees across the county, and using a data point we were able to get from Amanda and the HR team of when, what was the date they entered their position? And then kind of saying, the date they entered their position to today's date, how much internal experience do they have in this role, and giving everybody the same amount of credit for that internal experience. So let's say if we give somebody 2% per year of credit, if an individual's been in a job for 10 years, and you're giving everybody 2% per year credit, we would theoretically expect that individual to be 20% range penetration. So in doing that, we would evaluate, what is that individual's current rate, what is that expected rate of pay? Are they above, are they below it? If they're below it, this is what it would cost to bring them up to that rate. But that second option is saying, we're not going to adjust anybody above the midpoint of the grade. And again, it's just kind of putting some barriers in for cost purposes. But it's also saying, is anytime we do these studies, you can really think about the midpoint of the rate as the market rate. That is, I mean, we, again, when we assign jobs to roles, one of the big things we kept in mind was what is that external market rate, which grade is most closely aligned with that? So the reason some organizations say we're going to cap it at midpoint, one, it's going to help contain cost, but two, anytime we do these studies, we talk about them, this is a market study. The goal is to get as many of your employees at, to the market rate that need to be as possible. So as part of this, maybe the first year, maybe the second year, maybe the third year, we're not going to adjust anybody above the midpoint of the grade. The last one is basically saying, what is everybody's experience? It's taking the same years-of-experience approach, and let's put them wherever that expected rate of pay is, no matter what, but capping it at the maximum. Same way we currently treat kind of the grades and ranges and things like that. Other than very few circumstances, nobody's going to be paid at least on their base salary above the maximum of the grade or range that they're in. So those were really the three approaches that we took in determining what could the possible cost implications of a study like this be. So from here, now we've got this. These are kind of some of the next steps and recommendations that Amanda and myself and the team are going to be working on, is kind of, one is, and we'll talk about this in coming slide, is really developing a formal compensation philosophy. We'll kind of talk about what that is and what some of the key terms of that are, but I really think it's important for any organization to have a clear, concise comp philosophy that help guide why we do what we do in terms of paying employees and compensating employees. We'll obviously need to update and implement some salary administration guidelines and policies that change as a result of this, and we'll talk about a few different tools that may exist that will help Amanda and the county with that. We'll update any current pay structures in accordance, again, with these project recommendations, with union negotiations, with budget finalization and things like that. And then ultimately, we'll determine the best method for communicating the study results and next steps to all stakeholders and all employees that may be impacted by this. So in terms of a compensation philosophy, what a compensation philosophy is, is it's really just a formal statement documenting a company or organization's position about employees' compensation. It really explains the why behind employee pay and creates a framework for consistency. So the county absolutely has comp policies that outline a lot of this stuff. And policies are more so meant to really get into the weeds of it, and really talking about the administration and kind of the nuts and bolts of it. A comp philosophy is meant to be much more high-level, and kind of be that document that you can put possibly on your HR website, within your employee handbook, or anything like that. Again, that really gets at that why behind employee pay. You could even get into, while this study itself is only focused on salary and pay, this is where you may also start to put in, what does a total comp package look like, what does a benefit package look like, and things like that. So where does an organization strive to be? Do they strive to be the absolute market leaders in comp and benefits? Do they strive to be market-aware with results of compensation, but maybe leading in benefits? So again, that's really where you get into there to kind of, again, one of the goals of a comp philosophy, and a clear one, should be to help attract and retain employees. As we get down there and talk about why is having one important, it should absolutely help support the business strategy, again, aid in attracting top talent, what is that? If you're very clear about what your market competitive position is in terms of how you want to be paid in the market, that may help in attracting or retaining employees. It should hopefully help increase employee engagement and motivation, increase that retention and talent development. If you've got a clear compensation system and a clear classification system, and employees understand it, and understand how they may grow vertically within the organization or horizontally within the organization, it may help support them and their talent development to understand, how do I get from A to B? How do I get from an entry level up to a manager? Or if I'm in human resources and I decide that's maybe not the career for me, what do I need to do to jump to IT or finance, or those different kind of areas that may exist? So these are all different kinds of things that can be outlined and kind of reinforced with a comp philosophy that's kind of out there.
What's a typical timeline to develop that?
Comp philosophies do not have to be overly complicated. I've seen some that are truly a couple paragraphs, most of them I would say are one-pagers. Again, comp policy is really what's involved in getting into the nuts and bolts and the weeds on how to operationalize it. Comp philosophy really meant to stay high-level, kind of that overarching guiding principle as to why you do what you do as an organization in relation to compensating your employees.
So kind of a guideline for our supervisors or for that level that we would be at, but also a statement for staff, understanding, I guess, what our philosophy is?
It's more so the statement for staff, that guiding principle and those kind of things, kind of the operationalizing it, that's more led by policy. Here's the approach we take for promoting employees. I mean, you see a lot of times with organizations, it might be very, very tight, anytime we promote an employee, 10% max, 10% max, or anytime you go up one grade, it's this, if you go up two grades, it's this. That's really getting into the nuances of it. Comp philosophy is, hey, here at Blackhawk County, we strive to pay a market-competitive wage, we want to be market-aware, we want to make sure that we're offering a total compensation package to our employees, things like that. We do that through regular market studies, we do that to make sure that it's equitable within the organization, and all those different kind of things. So it's pretty much just a promise to employees as to why you're doing what you're doing, and the policy piece of it is really how you put it into action.
Okay, thank you.
This slide here is really just kind of a, is meant to be an illustrative slide for pay progression and where employees may expect to be within a range. Like we've talked about earlier, it could be very, very justifiable for an employee to be at the 25th percentile. And this kind of just gives some guiding principles as to employees at the lower end of the range, or employees who are earlier in their career, developing proficiencies in their role, they're working towards increasing their knowledge and that kind of stuff. And again, as you move up, just because you've been with an organization or been working for 30 years doesn't mean that you have 30 years' total experience. It's really focused on that role that you're in. So again, as you go up, this kind of talks about, don't think about it in terms of how long you've been, an individual's been working- long you've been, an individual's been working or your performance across the breadth of your entire career. It's really focused on that role that you've stepped in at the at the current state. So really kind of talking about there on the bottom end, those employees that are new earlier in their career or earlier in their role, employees that you would typically see there around the plus or minus 50th percent or plus or minus that median, are employees that are fully experienced and qualified, have demonstrated sustained performance, they're continually coming to work and doing their job. And for employees to be really at that top end, at that 75th and above, that should really be reserved for your extremely long-tenured employees, your extremely high-performing employees. It should really take some time as well as very increased and high performance really to get to that maximum of the pay range as we think about that. Absolutely know that, again, I go back to it, no two organizations are the same and that kind of stuff. So this is absolutely meant to just be an illustrative thing in terms of what 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 does typical pay progression look like for an organization across all industries? This slide here, again, is very, very detailed and again, more so meant to be illustrated. But one of the things that we can do, and this will be one of the tools that we deliver to Amanda and the team, is the ability to really kind of create an employee roster or something like this, either across the entire organization or at minimum within job families or departments or things like that. And it really starts to highlight where are some of the issues here? So as we see down here, employee O and employee P on this one. As we look across there, what this what what a table like this shows is what is an individual's performance? What is an individual's education? What is an individual's total experience versus what are the minimum qualifications of the role that they're in? So we can see right here, both of these individuals are in a are in a role that require four years of experience, both in a role that require a bachelor's degree. They both have 12 years of experience, but employee P is exceeds expectation and has a master's, but they're paid lower. That's kind of an issue there. That's an anomaly there. When when there are limited dollars, when there are limited resources and things like that to spend, what a document like this allows you to do is kind of understand who's who's quote unquote more underpaid, if you will, relative to all else things being equal. So this is just one of the many tools that we'll deliver to Amanda and the team to allow them to kind of hopefully highlight some of this work. And in ideal world, we would always have a living document like this, but obviously for large organizations that have hundreds, if not thousands of employees, it's not possible to have this across the entire organization. But if we could at least have it within departments or divisions or things like that, we find that that might be helpful. This tool here, again, is just kind of going back to pay administration. This kind of is a tool that'll allow Amanda and the team to kind of do the same kind of approach that we took in determining what the cost implications would be, is using a tool like this for hiring or promoting within the organization. So what you can do with this tool is plug in the grade that you're either hiring for or promoting to. It's going to pre-populate the minimum midpoint and maximum. You're then going to go in and you're going to enter that candidate's total years of experience based on their resume, based on what you know about them. You're going to enter the minimum qualifications of the position in which they're being hired into. And you'll see how far do they exceed it? So really, how far should they be above the minimum of that pay grade? And then kind of going back down there to the bottom, you see that 2%, 3%, 4%. This is really, again, kind of using that same principle that we used for our cost impact analysis. If we gave this individual 2% for every year of service, this is where we would expect them to be within the range. And this is really meant to be kind of that guiding principle or a starting point or things like that. When we get up to the 3 and 4%, some organizations decide to use 4% because they want to be market leading. Another reason for using 4% as opposed to 2% is it a hard-to-fill role. So that's where in policy, you can go in and say, this is going to be our approach for a majority of our positions. But once a position's identified as a hard-to-fill, hard-to-recruit-for, high-turnover role, once that's been kind of identified, we may say, you know what? We're going to start to give 3% or 4% per year of credit for that role because of that. And again, that's where it's just going to kind of get into that art piece that you want to do to put put things in place that are going to work for your specific organization. That's kind of all I have today. Again, the intent of today's meeting was to kind of give you an idea of what we've been working on over the last year almost with Amanda and the team. We're very, very close to getting to final recommendations and delivering kind of a final report and things like that. So thank you very much. And at this point, we'll open it up to any questions.
So your timeline expected is year end for the most part of almost completing?
For the most part, yes. It's my understanding that negotiations and things like that with the bargaining unit positions are going to be starting after the first of the year. So the goal would be to have as much as much of this information as possible to Amanda by year's end.
Thank you.
So this is just, you know, we have a an idea kind of at high level, you know, where the county, I guess, compares, right? And so we'd like to use this information and come back to the board and kind of come to a place where we can determine that compensation philosophy, right? And so when we talk about that, as Alan suggested, you've got the highly competitive, you've got competitive, and then what some call could be lag, right? And so those numbers that you saw, that 12% behind per ranges for pay, that's not necessarily for every position here. We have some that absolutely are right to the market, but we need to talk about how do we maintain that, right? How do we maintain that competitive position as we go into those discussions for budget and for negotiations, which we've had some discussions leading up to this about that? There are certainly advantages and disadvantages to any of those philosophies, which we can kind of talk about if you have questions on. I think most of you are pretty familiar with compensation philosophy at this point. I've heard a lot about it. You know, this is kind of unique in that we open this classification compensation study to all positions in the county. Other agencies that I've worked with, peers, sometimes they've only done it for non-union to just kind of get a look at, you know, where non-bargaining needs to fall. Specifically, our unions tend to always kind of trend in a 2.5, 2.75, 3%. And we've seen some pretty high increases over the last couple of years as well. But this really took everybody and assumed that everyone was on the same scale and progressed in the same manner like non-bargaining, which would be about 15 years. But our unions on average top out about eight or nine years, and their average increases range roughly around 4.5% per year without including this the across-the-hordes that they receive as well. So those are just things that I've kind of sent to you to kind of keep in mind when you think about your compensation philosophy. But that's what I hope to come back to in January to help define when we get through negotiations and when we talk about budget as well, as well as bring forward kind of an updated non-bargaining compensation plan and one that identifies where we need to continue that progression. Because as we know, we kind of stopped progression at 75th percentile. And I think we have some opportunities there to fully realize that range within the non-bargaining roles. So there was, you know, with the financial implications, and we talked a little bit about the three options, and we didn't quite get into the numbers, but just a rough idea. That minimum is around $75,000 that the board could look at and accept to bring people into the minimum. To look at that 2% per year for years of service in the role through midpoint, you're looking at about $200,000. To do the full range, it would be upwards of half a million dollars. So that kind of gives you an idea, you know, where these financial implications are leading.
Thank you for all the work. I said these 20 pages or whatever they are. I know I know how you reflect all the hours that you guys have put in on this. It's been a lot of time, even over that year, but lots to all of you that have worked on it. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Mark, could you just repeat those numbers, the last act again?
So $75,000 on the low end.
Yep.
That we bring into minimum, bringing people that that handful that are kind of nearing misalignment or are misaligned. $200,000 to take into account, we're going to cap it at midpoint or that market average, but we're going to take about, you know, years of service in the role is going to be included for that. And then half a million dollars, I think that was 2% of payroll.
About 2% of payroll.
2% of payroll.
Is what that would be.
To mean to bring through the full maximum of the range, of the market range.
Thanks.
And those, you know, that's all of this is really intended to be a guide certainly for us as we talk about salaries and budgets. And, you know, I think the compensation philosophy is a great place to start. When we're liking the market, usually use the entities that are doing that because there's financial challenges and financial difficulties, right? And and that's a very justifiable position to begin. But there are disadvantages. It's less competitive, right? But and we have to kind of focus on our benefit offering as well. When you match the market, you're able to be more competitive. Your labor costs, you know, you may have to be doing some adjustments, but and then but overall, you're generally competitive. Leading the market, you really want to make sure that that position, that you're getting the benefit out of that, right? And that would be kind of reserved for those really highly competitive roles that we're having a very difficult time, the really volatile markets, I would say. And we've seen some of those in law enforcement. We've seen some in public health. Those are just kind of examples. IT is one in the industry that tends to kind of trend because it's just the nature of the beast. But those are just different things. We can, you know, look at even combinations of that. And I think having a philosophy statement, like you said, just a promise, something that kind of is the overall outcome and where we want to position ourselves in the years to come.
So Gallagher just considers the the salaries, the wages, and then we take into consideration the benefits.
Right. So, you know, benefits are a great thing for our employees here. And I would say we lead in benefits probably and when you compare it to like maybe private sector. But when we look at our peers, our neighbor and communities, our counties, our cities, our benefits tend to match up pretty similarly. But that is absolutely right. Like, that's something that we need to continue to focus on and kind of look beyond just strong health incentives, right? Look at modernizing different benefits, fringe benefits. I've talked about 457, you know, B, the third comp. I've talked about remote work at time or flexible schedules, things like that. But that would be part of that, you know, it can absolutely be part of that compensation philosophy. A lot of our time off pretty much matches most of the other public agencies around here. I mean, but that, but when you look at a private sector, I mean, it's generous. So that's something that we absolutely need to highlight and remind, you know, staff and but also kind of be aware that it's, if you go to another county, another city, it may be very similar struggle. They're right, that they do not explore all the benefits, so.
So the meeting in January, too, when we've kind of completed then all the steps that we have, is that another presentation that we'll be having with you together or joint? Or is it just something we do internally?
I think it's more internally at that point. I mean, not like.
I can definitely zoom in or things like that.
Yep. And so, yeah, so, you know, today I'm not necessarily looking for an action. It's more of an informational meeting. Here's where we are with the study. Here's the results that we're seeing and for us to kind of get a direction and a guide as we navigate salary budgets. So I just want to, any other, were there any other questions before I, or anyone on, I don't know, Tom and Chris, any questions?
Chris or Tom, any questions near end?
No, I'm fine.
No questions, but I appreciate a lot of good information to help us make some informed decisions here.
Thank you, guys.
I'm glad we looked at all the employees, too, because it's been it's been so long since we've had something done. Wasn't like we'd been doing it from recent times. So I think just to look at us overall was a good selection. So thank you.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, just being aware to kind of look at this on a some kind of cycle, you know, right? Every like five years, have something to refresh, just kind of give an idea. That kind of can go into that philosophy as well, or policies that he that Alan spoke on. But, yeah, so, you know, this is where we land right now. And I'm sure there's questions and, you know, employees and yours. But I just want to thank the board for the opportunity to work with Gallagher's team and their consultants and experts who evaluate all of our compensation and classification, you know, roles and structures here across the county. We do have kind of a wide range of pay structures. You know, we have some pay structures in the unions that top out in three years, some that top out in 11 and 1/2, and then we have non-bargaining that tops out in like, doesn't really quite top out, but they they move in about a 15-year span. So that's the kind of things that we'll be looking for some direction on as to how we want those structures to to be, they're more uniform or more consistent as we head into negotiations and some budget. But I just want to thank the board's openness and consideration to the sensitive topic of compensation and to the employees that it's been a long year. And I've had a lot of people that have contacted me about where are we at with this. Just want to thank their patience as we collected all the information and analyzed it and now presented.
This seems like the right thing to do. I wish 10 years ago, my employer would have done it.
Yep. I think it's, you know, it's been a good exercise, absolutely. And it's been one that like we can make some better decisions. I think we have some great tools that can help refine some of our policies, especially when we talk about starting this for non-bargaining. We talked about that quite a bit. Our policy allows to go up to midpoint, but sometimes there's, you know, we want to have a better rhyme or reason as to why we would do something like that and a better understanding that midpoint is a it's a really skilled professional that doesn't need a whole lot of orientation to their new role, right? And but overall, I think our ranges do the opportunity to kind of look at where does that market fall? Is this where we want to fall in comparison to the market? And maybe just, you know, Work Choice dot com and well that the board can help establish or will establish in the coming months or in the next month or so.
Is five years kind of a typical time to look at, like reevaluate or at least reassess kind of where you're?
Yeah, typically, our recommendation is every three to five years to do a full-blown one like this on those in-between years. That's certainly something that you guys can reach out to us. We can kind of put together kind of a memo for you based off of information that we get from World at Work that goes out. World at Work is a, again, an HR publication that on a yearly basis puts out a report that says this is what the average actual salary increases have been. This is what the average structure adjustment has been. And they do that across industry, across the country and all those kind of things. So I mean, just to give you an idea of if you're trying to understand what should our yearly budget be this year, those are kind of things on a in-between year basis to do those. But in terms of doing a full-blown one like this, I mean, yeah, every five or so years, I would say.
Thank you. So you can look forward to that if it's every five years, huh? You guys doing it again.
The thing to be said about that, though, is if you do it every five years, I mean, again, going from where you have been to thinking about doing it every five years, if you make the commitment to do it every five years, it's much less of a dive or or a deep dive than it is on this. So I mean, I know, it was like, oh, my gosh, doing this every five years, it would not be on this scale, especially if you committed to doing the year-over-year adjustments by saying, just kind of staying with markets, staying with trend data and that kind of stuff. So that when we come back and do things like that, it's 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 definitely not the effort that it is to do one, having not done one in 10-plus years, 10, however, however long.
10-plus, yeah. That's generous.
And it's really an opportunity to kind of have that internal hierarchy and see across all of our operations, across different offices, departments, you know, do we have jobs that are doing similar work that are not compensated the same? I think that was a great opportunity for us to kind of look at that and for employees to be part of that by submitting those PDQs and reviewing their job descriptions. But, yeah, it wouldn't be near to that extent since we've we've done a lot of the light work here, because some of those jobs kind of been looked at in 20, you know, 30 years.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Item four, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
I'm moved.
Okay.
Ms. Meadner?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payments today are $572,307.06. And of that, $82.79 is being paid from the 60-40 fund. Everything appears to be in order. Anybody have any questions today?
All right. Thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer.
I just wanted to update you on the, the bridge crew was out on Gibson Road this week, driving that, that pile that I told you about. We had to close that small bridge temporarily while we're driving new pile to shore up that, one of the abutments where there is poor timber pile and poor conditions. And we're hoping to have that done by next week and then get the bridge reopened. Other than that, our crews are out cutting a lot of brush this week, particularly along Union Road to remove some of the few trees that have, that will shade the, they're keeping the area shaded. Can I answer any questions at this, at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other project updates? Anyone on Zoom with an update? Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on to the minutes being approved for November, December 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign. Item seven is the consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove something for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item eight is contracts and agreements. Resolution that the lowest responsible bid received from Aspro Inc., Waterloo, Iowa, for Project FMC 007171-55-07 for HMA resurfacing cold-in-place recycling on Dunkerton Road from Wagner Road, east two miles to Highway 63, and Project FMC 007172-55-07 for HMA resurfacing and cold-in-place recycling on Canfield Road over Interstate 380 Overpass with a total bid of $1,517,322.09.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah, this will be our construction, our paving projects for next summer. And the DOT did open bids in their November letting. And of course, they received the one bid from Aspro. And I would recommend that you receive this bid and award the project to Aspro and then also allow me to sign the contract in DAC Express for this contract.
Any questions for Kathy? Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item nine, other business. Resolution that quarantine and isolation, adoption of model rule of notification and surveillance of reportable communicable disease, poisonings and conditions, Section 1.121 through 1.1210, as approved by the Blackhawk County Board of Health on November 29th, 23. Be approved.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Good morning, board. Caitlin Emmerich with Public Health. I have our Disease Surveillance and Investigation Manager, Sarah Morgenthaller, with me in case there are any questions about the adoption of this ordinance. Just as a quick background, it was approved by the Board of Health. On November 29th, we had a public hearing at that time and there were no written or oral comments for that public hearing. This is part of a regular review ordinance that we have. One of our performance measures is reviewing our ordinances regularly. And so we're bringing this to the board at this time.
How often will this be reviewed? Like, when you say it's part of a regular review, is it done annually?
Um, I think every five years is our rotation. I would have to double-check, but it's somewhere in that ballpark.
I believe there's a, there's a rolling, the goal is to have a rolling three-year review where you do a third of them one year, a third of them the next year, a third of them the year after that, and then start over.
It was compelling meeting, like all 50 pages. It appears that this is a standardized ordinance across the state guided by Iowa code.
Correct, correct. So this is model rule that's published in Iowa Administrative Code 641, which is the public health chapter. And they, they carve out a section for quarantine and isolation because many counties across the state are expected to have a quarantine and isolation ordinance for preparedness reasons and those kinds of things. So they provide the model rule, so counties don't have to write it on their own. Sir, did I hear there was a question?
Oh, was there a question online, Chris or Tom?
Yeah, I had one. Seems that this is ordinance, the board doesn't have to go through the public hearing?
Uh, the public hearing was through the Board of Health. So we don't have to do it again, correct?
So we don't have to do it at our level, even though we're approving it?
That's correct, Tom. What has to happen is first, it goes through a process at the health board level that culminates in a public hearing there after there's been an opportunity for input by stakeholders and publish notice. After that, and this is under, I believe it's Chapter 137, after that, all that has to happen is the Board of Supervisors needs to approve it. It's not an ordinance in the Chapter 331 sense, but it's a, it's a health regulation under the rulemaking authority of Chapter 137, which is what governs the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Appreciate the, I was going to say the timeline that you provided for us, too. That was quite a bit of detail, so thank you. Whichever, if you did that, thank you.
Sarah gets the credit for that, yes.
Are there any other questions to ask? All right. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called. And thank you.
Jelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Item B is a motion that the personnel requisition for office specialist full-time in the county attorney's office be approved as recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney.
So moved.
Second.
Brian's here, probably didn't want to comment, but it was just a replacement of a position, but I didn't know if there was a comment made. I know it had been requested as an admin aide. Did you want to comment on that a little bit?
It's just a, it's an office specialist. It's a correct title and it was, we had an internal promotion that led to this vacancy, so.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motions carry. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing bid opening to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, January 9th, in Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed purchase of snow equipment for the Blackhawk County Engineers Department.
So moved. Second.
Just to give you a little bit of background, this will allow us to send the bids out for snow equipment. If you recall, about six or eight weeks ago, we did advertise for the three chassis's, two single, two single axle tan chassis and one tandem axle chassis. Those are on order through Freightliner. We expect to receive those trucks in, in March, right now is what we're hearing. And then this would be the completion of that, that order so that we have snow equipment, sander, screder, and a front plow and a wing plow for these vehicles. This would complete that work. We're estimating it's about $200,000 approximately for this.
Any other questions, Kathy? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item D, motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 on Wednesday, December 27th, in the Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed vacation of Rickard Road originally established May 6th, 1856, legally described as that part of the northeast quarter in Section Number 32, Township Number 88, North Range, Number 11 West of the Fifth Principal Meridian, Blackhawk County. Iowa described as parcel B, as described in the Platte survey recorded in file 2023.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
This is a long-term request from the underlying title owner to these two, these two parcels. We've worked with Mr. Trynenon on this and we have no need for this land. We feel it is a good, good time to vacate this, this land and, and we will be sending out letters. Once you approve this, we'll send out letters, including, including to Mid-American and then we will hold our public hearing in two weeks then.
Have we talked to the people who originally established it in 1856?
I don't believe we were able to reach them. But we, we, we will be notifying the, per the code, we will be notifying the adjoining property owners and the utilities.
This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item E, motion to approve the release of a request for proposal for the Recorder's Information Technology Services.
So moved. Second.
Good morning, board. Sandy Smith, recorder. This is our main real estate recording and indexing system. I just wanted to make you aware, our contact, contract does expire in May of '24. We have overall been with the same vendor for 15 years. So we think it's time we maybe look around and see what else is available. Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F, motion to approve for evaluation by Baker Tilly for ARPA eligibility, the proposed facility's HVAC project.
So moved. Second.
Is anybody, Rory or anyone speaking to this? Where's Rory?
Good morning, board. Rory, giving facilities director. This is a ARPA request for the three large public buildings, the Blackhawk County Jail, the Pinecrest Facility and the courthouse. Our goal here is ultimately to improve indoor air quality. So this would be taking a, a look at all three systems completely, looking at energy savings, sustainability. You know, the systems are quite aged in our buildings, although, you know, I, I believe we've done a good job over the years replacing, you know, our large main equipment such as boilers, chillers, those types of things. But when you start diving into more of the internals of the building, there is a lot of room for improvement, particularly with the air quality. So that is kind of the goal for this project. And do you have any questions for me?
Have we done this previously, Rory, or something similar? Did we do a request to them at all? To Baker Tilly to evaluate?
As far as ARPA request?
I'm, to Baker Tilly? Have we supplied anything to them on this at all previously?
No. Maybe I can speak to that, Rory. I, as we have talked about the proposed funding and the, the kind of the balance that was uncovered, I have been including Rory's estimate for this project, but it has never gone further than just being presented to you on that list. So it hasn't been evaluated by Baker Tilly or anything like that yet.
Do we have an estimated cost then for what we're thinking still for this, or?
What we put in the application was $3,150,000.
And are all three systems sort of in, in line with each other? Are they all sort of aging at the same clip or?
Yeah, my goal for this project is really to look at getting standardized. I want to get, uh, uh, systems under one umbrella. Right now, we kind of have a product of three different systems, which is a little bit challenging for our staff, getting, bouncing from one facility to another and having different systems. We believe that we could really improve energy efficiency, employee efficiency by looking at standardizing that system under one operating digital control system. Does that answer your question?
Sort of.
What did I miss?
Just trying to get a, you know, if, let's, it's just tough. Let's say each system has a, a letter grade. If some of them are at a C, some of them are a D or an F, it would just be nice to know how far along these sys, you know, do these systems have any legs left or are they nearing the end of life? Sort of all at the same time.
I would say with the three buildings, they are all very similar as far as the technology that they use. The technology is somewhat dated. And also the, the control mechanisms. For example, pneumatics, which is a fairly common control mechanism, you know, 20, 30, 40 years ago. What we've, you know, found out now is by eliminating pneumatics, you, you increase energy efficiency. You get better control with digital. And so all three facilities utilize some pneumatics in their system. So that's one aspect that we would be looking at wanting to upgrade. So, yeah, that is some consistency throughout. Obviously, the Blackhawk County Jail only being, you know, a little over 20, 20-some years old compared to, say, Pinecrest, which is, you know, over 100 years old. It's, uh, there are some differences when it comes to the systems, but in 20 years, there hasn't been any real updates with how we control our, our HVAC. There's been updates in major equipment, but the control aspect of it is dated and, and pretty similar actually throughout all three sites. So that's really what we'd be focusing on is the indoor air quality. For an example, we have, I think we had mentioned this before, but with regards to consolidated communications and some of the issues we had here recently with odors coming into the building from outside, we would look at addressing those types of issues to, again, improve indoor air quality. And that's fairly consistent here at the courthouse as well. Pinecrest, little bit different, but Pinecrest, we would be looking at introducing fresh air, which we're lacking over there. So there is a little bit uniqueness amongst each three sites, but all in all, I think the common goal is really looking at improving that indoor air quality.
Maybe, maybe this is a question for maybe Mike or Michelle. And this isn't an indication on, on where I'm going, so don't read into it. But if we approve sending this for ARPA eligibility and at a later date we determine we only want to fund, let's say, two of the three phases of the, three, two of the, of the three buildings, do we have an issue? Can we, can we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
This is only to have Baker Tilly look at it and determine whether it's eligible for ARPA expense category funds.
So it isn't just looking at collectively, it could be actually looking at, I mean, I assume all three would probably qualify because this was somewhat that pandemic response for air quality and what we were doing, improving buildings, but just to say.
That was the thought process of the ARPA committee when we discussed this project. Basically, the fact that it, that it deals with handling of what would be contagions, and that was one of the questions that we had for Rory. That's what he's envisioning here with this. That would seem anyway like it would be eligible under one of the expense categories.
I, I think in response to what you were saying, though, too, is looking at it not just collectively, then if there was something we wanted to piecemeal out of it, that it wouldn't be like we needed to do another application.
Correct.
That it would hit all those aspects of it.
In my opinion, yes. As, if the overall project was covered, I don't see how it could be not covered just because you chose one or two as opposed to all three.
And have we been getting a relatively quick response from them? I mean, I know each project different in the size of the projects and stuff, too. How are we with our responses from?
Usually, usually two to three weeks when I send them something. I'm waiting on one right now from them, but they've been pretty responsive.
That's good. And I'll, I'll secure sending this to Baker Tilly today, but I won't be able to support the, the funding of it until we're moving forward more on the Health Department. Because I'm getting, I'm getting concerned at the, at the pace of that and I'd like to see that become a, more of a priority to get that moving forward much sooner.
Did you want to comment on that at all, Rory, today or not? I mean, not, I know some things, but you might want to comment about timing on that.
Yeah, my goal is, depending on whether or not we can achieve a meeting yet this week, but my goal was to actually propose an idea or a concept with regards to the clinic and the EPI building to the Board of Supervisors on the next week's agenda. So ultimately, that's my goal. So we are getting very close.
Thank you.
And I apologize, it, it does seem like it, it has been dragging out. But, uh, you know, when we just had multiple facets in this, that's kind of played a role. So I feel like now things have come together and we, we can actually present a plan to the board and hopefully get some movement on this.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, too, Chris? It's just for the Baker Tilly part of it.
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Tom, have you got any questions?
No, I'm fine.
Any other questions before we make a vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item G is discussion with possible board action on approval of the Sheriff's Office Storage Servers Project at an estimated cost of $85,000 payable with ARPA replacement revenue funds. And I think that was your suggestion, or the committee's suggestion, that it was paid for with that?
That's correct. The committee discussed this and concluded that it just didn't seem likely that this would be approved for an expense category. It, it seemed like more of a, a maintenance expense or a, you know, a, we need a new server, so we're getting a new server kind of expense, and Al can explain that in greater detail. And therefore, rather than spend the money on having Baker Tilly evaluate this, it seemed more sensible to the committee that the Board considered as a replacement revenue project.
Okay, thank you. Al.
Hi. How are you, ID Director? Talked about this, these servers a little bit before, but just as a reminder, they are the last part of the ISAT recommendation, and it does benefit not just the sheriff, but the entire county as a whole, and it will address a lot of storage issues, so. Any questions, any questions I can answer for you guys?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty brief. More information, please. I was gonna say, I did look at the questionnaire even, and it talked about, I think you and I had some conversation about when you said the servers would centralize county data.
Correct. And when I say centralized, it means it's physically moves to here, into this building. It will still service the Sheriff's Department, our networks are connected. The original intent of this server was not only to house sheriff data, all of their sheriff data, but also all of the CGI, things like video surveillance, things that they're required to hold for a minimum of two years. They're, they're quite large, they take up a lot of space, and, but we are required to do so because of CGIS, and so this would address that issue as well.
And you mentioned this was the last of the ISAT recommendation, but I was gonna say, how is it for, I know we spent a lot of funding, ARPA funding especially, on technology. I don't know if you know that number right off the top of your head, I know I sure don't, maybe Michelle does as well, but I was just gonna say, are we coming to a point where we have all of those projects funded, or I guess captured?
Yeah, this, this is the final piece of what the recommendation is, and it will allow us to move forward with finishing the, the Sheriff's Office, the process of getting them up to speed and all their technology. It, it's, it's gonna be a slow process, but we'll, we'll get there, but this, this is the last piece. I will say that.
What do you mean by slow?
Huh?
What do you mean by slow?
It's a slow process because we can't just rush the process. Everything that we do, we have to do it very, we have to time it very carefully to avoid disruption. So if, if, if I had my way, we would just do it, you know, a flip of a switch, we'd do it, but it would, it would create a very, we would not be very popular people if we did that. So we're, we're trying to find that balance and making sure we do everything at a good pace, but also not to avoid disruptions for the staff.
And this has been housed over at the Sheriff's Office, but will now be housed here?
Correct. They, they have servers that are really dated, and they're running out of space, and this would, we would, it makes more sense to physically house this here, and then everyone benefits from it.
The Sheriff's had some other projects. I was gonna say that he was participating in helping fund, I think, with funding at the jail.
Correct. They, they are, I think there's the, the Stanley system, which is their general jail system.
Thank you.
That is, that is separate from the ISAT. I think they, they noted it, but they didn't specifically say, point it out, or they didn't detail the cost of it, and that, and I believe the, the jail system has already been approved for ARPA, and that's just, and that, that one is, we're just waiting on Stanley, because there is a lead-out time to get that upgrade.
So were there some of the Sheriff's projects, or maybe this is a Michelle question, as far as that the Sheriff's utilized his budget to fund as well some of those IT projects, or some of the projects we've had out there?
He did. Off the top of my head, particularly the switching the email, I think to Office 365, that was a big one that was paid out of his operating budget, and then there were some other servers, I want to say. There was some other kind of equipment that was paid out of the, I believe, out of the CGIS budget, but yes, he did, they have paid for most of, actually, what was required by ISAT has been absorbed by their operating budgets, except for this and the switches. The switches, he already had a project going.
Correct. The switches were, were itemized, but we covered that because we already had the RFP, and we had the counts for, for the Sheriff's side already, so that, that saves them money. Yep. And I think the Sheriff will cover probably, and he's aware of this, odds and ends, just regarding computers that need to be replaced here and there, but that is small potatoes in comparison to everything else.
Was he utilizing, I think, the commissary budget or something at one point in time for some of this, too?
That I'm unsure of, because I know there's restrictions on what they can use that for.
The inmates.
I think really it has to benefit the jails specifically, so like, you could say that that would help towards a Stanley project.
The inmates, I think it had to benefit.
Yeah, the inmates, correct. And he, Nate was hoping to fund that jail security upgrade from that, but he doesn't have enough available funding there to fund the full $400,000. So he and I had discussed that would, he would be willing to pay for a portion of the jail security project, and that would allow us to free up that much money to do the server project out of the replacement revenue.
Okay. So. So one of the other projects that's kind of assisting with to give some funding availability for this?
Right, so that we, to make sure they can get them both done.
Moving parts. Okay. No more surprises that we know of, huh?
No more.
No IT, no, nothing? Other questions, Tom, Chris? Any questions?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Nope.
Want to take it, what? Were you gonna ask a question?
No.
Do we?
Was there a motion already?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
No, it was like, if we wanted one, okay.
Chris made a motion, I seconded.
Thanks.
All right. Let me see, I guess we can do resolution, or should we do just all in favor, say aye?
Let's do a resolution.
Let's do, yeah. Please answer as your name is called.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwert.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
Layland.
And it is contingent, obviously, on what you mentioned, the switching of the funds was good.
If you want to make that part of the motion.
Make that part of the motion, yeah. Is everybody okay with that, since that was kind of the plan?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
You as well, Chris, okay, thank you.
The jail commissary fund.
What will be paid out of jail?
I'll give you a portion of the jail security upgrade.
A portion of the jail security upgrade will be paid from commissary funds?
Yes.
And then I think I was the last vote, yes.
Nobody disagrees on the, on the contingency in the motion?
No, Chris said yes tonight.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Good. Sorry, I didn't hear that.
I know, there's a lot going on.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, any reports or information from the Board?
I'll just report, at the Upper Cedar River Watershed Meeting last week, we discussed, we're doing a watershed management day at the Capitol on January 29, with the ask that we're asking the legislature to fund their unfunded mandate and put funds for watershed coordinators for all the WMAs in the state.
Is that the group, Chris, that did an analysis, water analysis, too? They were gonna be doing some, providing more information on that?
Yeah, the, the, the most extensive study and kind of infrastructure plans were developed for the Middle Cedar River. That was under the, there was, there was a HUD grant that is now since expired, but I was gonna ask them to come back and present, and they're supposed to be sending us hard copies of, of the plans, too.
Thank you. Are there, I know we need to do the presentations for the remaining, like, half of the community funding requests. Do we want to do that at a board meeting, like, if we're at the end of following of next week's board meeting, or do you want to go for a Wednesday, or what would be the Board's preference? Or it doesn't have to be Wednesday, it could be any day, so we can get those scheduled and done?
At the conclusion of next week's meeting, how many are we anticipating?
Nine, I think it would be.
There's nine left? Okay. And we would just knock those all out in one meeting presumably?
Yep.
After, after next week's meeting would be good for me.
Okay. Does that work for you, Chris, Tom?
Yeah, that works for me.
Bye.
Okay, great, thanks very much. Item 11, adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.